Order. There we go. I'm gonna call the meeting to order Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Roll call, Michelle.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Wyatt.
Present.
Councilmember Dan Han. Council President Cox.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Stubble.
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han.
Present.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we approve the agenda, I had a request a motion to amend the agenda to delete number three, Kira Kulovich. Presentation and move executive session up to number three.
I move to amend the agenda to remove the presentation by the Energy and Environment Task Force. And move into executive session.
Any second?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Cox, second by Councilwoman Stubble to through the agenda has changed, so call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move right along and I need a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move we move into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation.
Got a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Stubble, second by Councilwoman Cox to move into executive session. I'm gonna call for the question, Councilman Hong.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, we'll be right back. But Ian, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Move to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Second.
That was my count, Councilwoman White, second by Councilwoman Stubble to come out of the executive session. Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on. First on our agenda is communications from the floor. Please approach the microphone and state your full name for the record. The meeting and comments are electronically recorded. All comments must be limited to the three minutes. Do I have anybody from the floor that would like to address the council? Hey. Nobody? Okay, sounds good. We'll move on. They have a couple of good proclamations today. It's first one is Kids to Park Day, May twentieth. Missy?
Thank you, Mayor. In a proclamation proclaiming May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Lander. Whereas, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three is the thirteenth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. Held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholester- oh, hang on a second, hypercholesterolemia. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Therefore, I am Missy White on behalf of Mayor Monte Richardson to hereby proclaim May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as Kids to Parks Day.
Okay, thank you. We have another one is Elks National Youth Week, May proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the Elks Lodges of the state of Wyoming will observe May first through seventh as Elks National Youth Week in tribute to our junior citizens. Honoring them for their achievements and contributions to the life of the community, state and nation. Whereas, it is our responsibility to guide, inspire and encourage our youth to go forth to serve America. Our privilege to manifest a lively interest in all their activities and ambitions. And help prepare them for the duties and opportunities of citizenship, which is the objective of Elks National Youth Week. Now, therefore, I, Melinda Cox, on behalf of Mayor Monte Richardson, do hereby proclaim the first week in May as Elks National Youth Week. And I call upon all citizens and all departments of state and local governments to cooperate in the observance that we may obtain these worthy objectives.
Debbie Meredith?
Stand up there with your picture.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Meredith. Moving on, we'll go right into mayor council updates. I'll start with council, Councilman Larson.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just want to let you know that the Lotra is doing a great job getting geared up for the July fourth rodeo. They have all their livestock and judges and timed event people all lined up. There were some issues with the electronic tickets there last year, which they 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 got through that in in great shape. And they've got another outfit called Fair Harbor that they're using this year. And is supposed to be a really good outlet for the online tickets. They've asked us to kind of keep an eye on the fireworks area out there where it's underneath the swamp and the 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 snowdrifts right now that if, you know, come July, if it's getting dry and grass high, we might need to mow that and and get get that taken care of. They've also got an individual that will be representing the the relay racers. And they're gonna come out and inspect the the track, look at the the fencing and everything there and give their seal of approval on that. And we'll see if there's anything that needs to be done before that takes place. The the chamber is really excited about Brew Fest coming up next month. And there's a lot of lot of brewers that signed up and a lot of other concessionaires. And and it sounds like it's gonna be a great time. I've been really impressed with the amount of new chamber members and expanded chamber members that have been signing up with the chamber. They've, I think, recognized what it is that the the chamber is doing for them and and they're they're reacting accordingly. Solid waste board. They're getting the new scale houses for Lander, Dewboys and Sandra. Those should be in here probably in another couple of weeks. And then the bid has been let for the for the building out there at Lander. And so I guess, you know, things are just going forward.
That's good.
It's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman White?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. The Senior Center Board met this morning. Their prime rib dinner is this Saturday. Tickets are sold out. Hundred tickets went really quickly. They do have a silent auction and some raffle items. You don't have to be a dinner participant to to get in on the silent auction items. They are continuing to sell raffle tickets for these really lovely pendants that one of the board members made as again as a fundraiser for that. And along with all of that, they are just tickled pink with the amount of support that the community's given. And the raffle items being donated, the ambassadors will help facilitate with the alcohol cash bar. They're very, very pleased with how all that's going. They also have a new bus driver that they're in the process of hiring. They're pretty excited about that. And I gotta say, I really appreciate them and their diligence and their financial management. One of the things they do, they they call it an audit. It's not quite the same as what a CPA would do, but they they rotate different board members each month, compare the checks that were written and verify everything. Just randomly pick a check is a really nice way to make sure that things are flowing appropriately. I think that's really astute and and I appreciate that, recognizing that they're running a a city-owned facility and appreciate their due diligence in that. Some somewhat related to council things, speaking, putting on my fast hat. So the midday employments on Thursdays and Saturdays started on May fourth. And that so far really well received. We, of course, can't wait until we get more of those happening, but at least for now, we've got a little more option for that, which is great. I wanted to give a shout out to the Good Samaritan Community Meal. Over the last four Fridays, the the number of meals are going, being served are going up and up. You know, it used to be that we'd hardly break two hundred meals. This past month, we had two hundred and eighty-eight, two seventy, two ninety-two and two ninety-four in terms of meals being served. I bring that up for the a couple of points. One is, if you have need, please, please come by. Like, that's why it's there. Some folks take one meal, some take some take ten or or more, whatever it is that's needed for your family. Also, if you have means, I also bring it up for that sense, whether it's in time or finances, they can certainly use assistance for that. They are participating in the challenge for charities. So if you donate to the Lander Community Foundation, earmarked for the Good Samaritan Meal, then those dollars are matched typically in the area of fifty percent, which is pretty important. Then lastly, in terms of one of my interests here on council, I I'm part of a statewide housing call that happens monthly. And one of the things being talked about is possibly a statewide housing summit. Lander's not the only community facing a a very real need for more reasonably priced housing and housing opportunities. And along those lines, the Planning Commission met this past week and they are starting to go through our our code to look for opportunities to make housing opportunities more reasonably priced. If y'all have not looked at Zillow in the last few days, please do. The and and look at the the the, as you scroll down for any of the listed properties, they have an option for the the estimate of the housing price. And look where it was in twenty nineteen twenty, and then where it's at now. And you will be floored. Make sure you're sitting down when you do that. Because you you will be floored by the change in the prices. And I know that's impacting many, many people in our community. And it just slays me that so many folks are are feeling that squeeze and finding Lander no longer a tenable option for them. And that is it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hong?
And all I have is, Janelle and I spent a weekend up in Jackson Hole. And if you haven't been up to Jackson Hole in a while, you really need to take a look at what's going on. It is, we need to be very careful how we build Lander because I'll tell you what, they've got, they've got cranes everywhere building skyscrapers. And it, they're destroying that town. They are totally destroying that town. It's it's really sad. It really does. And a lot of the people that we talk to, they're just having a difficult time because everything is going up. So anyway, if you haven't been to Jackson Hole, you really need to take a look at what they're doing to that town. And hopefully, we don't do the same. Thank you.
Councilman Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. One is, there's fourteen days left in the school year. I sit on the the liaison as Fremont County School District number one. And I think there's some folks that might be counting that down. It's also teacher appreciation. And there was a really great quote out about. And it's interesting that we did the proclamation today for the Elks National Youth Week. Because there are so many community members, teachers, that are that are really helping navigate, you know, our community with our kids. And it's much appreciated. And I think that sometimes those those jobs can be a little bit thankless, but rewarding. You know, even though they're they're difficult. So thank you to all of those folks that are putting in their time. Fremont County School District number one is dealing with quite a bit of, you know, change, staff change, just any any type of government, school district. It seems like turnover is just outrageous. And they're doing a good job of responding to that. They've also been dealing with the possibility of implementing a drug testing policy for their athletes. And that's been with good discussion. I think there's a couple of people in the audience that have heard those discussions. And, you know, I think that, and and most of you know that I wear a hat of trying to prevent substance abuse. And we definitely have a concern in our community with the amount of vaping that happens with our youth as well as drug use. A mental health is, you know, on the rise. There are a lot of local folks here that are doing a really good job of trying to intervene and also prevent. And so anytime you have an opportunity to attend, we attended a presentation last night just to gather information and different ideas and learn something new. It's it's definitely worth your while. And I know that Riverton City Council is discussing tonight. And I'm sure the chief is aware of the Delta Eight. I've talked about that a little bit here previously. But we have a couple of businesses in town that that sell Delta Eight, which is, it's a variation of THC. I'll just keep it very simple. And I know that that this concern is going to our legislatures and they're discussing it as well. Essentially, it's a it's a legal way to purchase a mind-altering substance. I'll keep it that way. And it is, it's available to our kids. And it's an unfortunate thing. I'm not saying that the business owners sell it to our youth, but all it takes is one of them to know somebody who's twenty-one and they've they've got it. So just be really mindful of that. Educate yourself about what that is and what that looks like. I'm sure we'll be discussing that at some point in the very near future. On the bright side, there's a lot of, a lot of good things happening within our community for our youth, a lot of activities. The summer is always such a great time in in Lander. Also, there's some changes with LIDA, the Lander Economic Development Association. They're having a meeting tonight, which I'm unable to attend due to a prior engagement. But they they are addressing some things. They're also looking for recruitment for that board. So there are definitely some good projects for LIDA. Also, just a, not a pitch, but I don't know if anybody was able to on, I think, the twenty-seventh of April, attend the pitch night, which the Startup Challenge Pitch Night. There were five, I think, finalists, Penguin Projects. That's an incredible project where they're doing some addressing some slower nonexistent internet signals here in our community. That project looked really cool. Wind River Adventure and Design, Matthew and Heather Cobb. You know, some local, these are a lot of local folks who are brilliant in their business design. Wind and Sage, Monica and Matthew Thoman, I hope I say that correct. Digit Sock, Bradley Hayes. Alternative Solutions to Hand Hygiene and Storm Chasers. I don't know if any of you have looked at Storm Chasers at all. But Juliana Acock and Jose Torres developed a machine that they were able to alleviate quite a bit of snow in Riverton. They would be well worth you looking into. That was an incredible project. Juliana's a Riverton person and she, I think she's an engineer. She worked in the oil field for quite some time and they developed this machine. Have you guys seen this? I don't want to take too much time, but they were able to alleviate an extensive amount of snow pileup in Riverton. Anyway, I would encourage you to, I'll look it up because if I say anymore, I'll say it wrong. So Storm Chasers, and they might be worth our time later on. I don't know if they turn it into steam or what, but anyway. Regine would be interested in that. That would be something you would enjoy. But anyway, just, what's that? Yeah. I don't know. That's that's really cool. So anyway, just some really fun things happening in our community and taking notice. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stubble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my pressing question is, does that machine work on city streets and how do we scale it to the speed and size and number of streets we have?
I think it could.
All right. I'm glad Regine was taking notes. Great. So, Mr. Mayor, I, the Conservation District meets tomorrow, so I have nothing to report there. But gladly, we'll take any questions, comments you have to that meeting. I did attend the Energy and Efficiency Task Force meeting last week and they remained just an incredibly very busy and active group. It's remarkable. So we did a run-through of the city, the proposed city budget. And they had some questions and focused in on building repairs and maintenance line items as a primary area of focus for where we might be able to understand the capacity we have for some of our efficiency upgrades. And so Shari helped answer some questions that they had too. So thank you for that. The group is also focusing on, as you saw on the agenda that we've moved tonight, a pretty large grant with comparative impact on electrical vehicle charging and fueling stations. And I think they're just working out a few more of the details before they bring that to us for greater discussion. But they have been, as they always are, in really close contact with staff throughout that process. And let's see, lastly, they had some questions about our interest and ours, like council and staff broadly, interest in making our buildings more resilient. If there are emergencies where we need backup sources of power in some of our buildings. And they had some questions for Lance. I'll take directly to him around goals and and find our, how to put this, focusing in that kind of large topic into one or two buildings or one or two, you know, what kind of, what numbers of people are we looking at? So that would, you know, help inform what types of, how much capacity, frankly, we would need of backup energy. So still a pretty remarkable group in terms of their ideas or activity and what they get done. And then also their really close and in-depth relationship with staff, which I appreciate the staff being available and partnering with them on a lot of those conversations. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hong?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Just real quick, I just want to thank my department heads. I feel the hard work we got them doing. And just to put it out there, so they answer a lot of phone calls, a lot of complaints. So thank you guys for being patient with the public. So it's great. Other than that, we'll move on and go to staff reports. Chief, you wanna go first?
Of course. Uh, no, just a few things. I mean, you'll see here in the next few weeks, since now the weather is warm. We had a little bit too much issue last year with vehicles and pedestrians and vehicles and bikes. So we're gonna try to get the word out the best we can to see if we can kind of mitigate that. Or the hope is, last year was a fluke because that was the most I've ever seen in any place I've worked when it came to issues with vehicles and bike riders and vehicles and pedestrians. So, but it's a two-edged sword. When we get the information out, it's not just the drivers. I mean, obviously, the driver's the vehicle that it happens, but we got pedestrians jaywalking. We got, I mean, it goes both ways. So we're gonna tailor and try to get as much information out as we can and hopefully we can avoid any issues this year. The only other thing on the
Well, the printer went berserk and paper jams that I wasn't aware of.
Well, probably because
I didn't know I was taking, I was taking questions so early. Yeah, no. No, on the, you know, the only other thing is on the grant front, the highway safety grant came in. What that grant is, is enforcement grant for DUI seatbelt. We have increased by three thousand, so it's roughly around fifteen thousand this year up from twelve last year. So and then the other thing is just finishing up the DOJ grant for bulletproof vests.
Got you. A couple of places.
We need to, we need them replaced. They're good through the end of two thousand and twenty-four, but it's better to get ahead now instead of trying to hurry next year. And then the last one is what I talked to you guys before about the forensic camera grant. That's through the OJP. So that's due in first week of June.
Do you have a question?
Councilwoman Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Chief. I I wonder too, and I'm sure you know more about this than I do. But will some of that funding be available to target distracted drivers? Because I, you know, I gotta believe that that contributes to vehicle pedestrian interaction.
I know, are you talking about the highway safety grant part, the enforcement parts? I know the occupational or not occupational, occupant safety seatbelt grant. They haven't actually labeled it as distracted driving also, but it's kind of inferred that that money is used for the, for that issue. So, but yeah, there's definitely a problem. And it's not just texting and driving, which I've been talking about it. Wyoming has a law when it comes to texting and driving. I meant that's pretty clear. But Wyoming does not have a law related to you looking at your phone, answering your phone, looking at your emails while you're driving. And that's, that's the epitome of, for the most part, you always hear, well, they must have been texting and driving. No, they probably, their phone dings, they learn, they lean down to look at it and boom, there we go. So that's the majority of it. That's the distraction is more than the texting. And they kind of focused on texting in the last few years too much, or really it's distracted driving overall.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, two questions on that. Do you see, are there studies or the data from towns, municipalities that have bans on cell phone use while driving? Do you see less rates of of incidences? You have, do you see a safer town? Those work, I guess, is the question?
I don't know. I know there's, there's a few towns that do have it, like Cheyenne has it. You have to be wireless or whatever they call it. I don't know that data. I can, I can call down and figure it out.
Yeah. I'm not a pressing issue rush, but I would be curious and I can try to do some research too. I've wondered about that because I I believe this is the second question. Doesn't the Wyoming law against texting just apply to state highways? That's not on city streets in Lander?
It applies to any public. They, if you if you look at statute, it says public highway. That's any publicly maintained roadway in the state. So it's not just highway. In theory, it's a city street also.
Good to know. I don't do that.
Now, there is.
Good to know. Good to know. Thank you.
Now, you gotta quit texting and drive. Any other questions? It's in our, and we want, Chris?
Thank you. Just a little update for the airport. We're currently in the process of redoing that taxiway up there. We've been having some major problems with the Centries plant that keep breaking down on us. Broke down today again, so hopefully it'll be back to plowing or paving tomorrow. And then we can get it finished up before the end of the week. For the fire department side, I did apply for a grant through YDOT, which was awarded in fifty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Those radios are half of our portable radios that we ordered. They should be here in the fall. And then the other half of the radios and mobile radios for the engines, I applied for a grant through Wyoming Homeland Security for fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And I'm just waiting to hear back. We're getting order for that. So if we get both those grants, it'll fund all of our radios a hundred percent with zero match from the city.
Good job. That's it. Thank you. Regine?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do want to clarify why we took the Energy Environmental Task Force off of the agenda. Like Julia said, there is a daily conversation sometimes between that group and our group. And it's great the way we communicate. But we've determined that that grant opportunity is not ripe for the city. It is a federal competition and our little projects that we could come up with here don't have a lot of regional buy-in. They don't have tribal buy-in. You know, it was just a few things for inside the city limits. And so we are not going to apply for that grant opportunity. We are, however, going to apply again for the Safe Streets for All opportunity. If you recall, we were denied last year, but we talked to the evaluators on that and they said we were very close to being recommended. This year, we're going to add in some county participation for multimodal Uh, this year, we're going to add in some county participation for multimodal pathways around Tweed Lane, Second and Balden Creek, Squaw Creek. And with that addition of a partnership, that makes us a regional program and it puts us in another category. So we're hoping we'll be successful for that. And, uh, I'll let you know when we apply for that grant. The deadline's, uh, in the fall. Uh, Lita and Lift are both looking for volunteers. They have open, open slots on Lita and Lift for volunteers. We couldn't do anything we do without these volunteer boards. Um, so I just want to encourage you, if you know anybody that might fit those, one of those two positions to ask them to apply. And, uh, the other one that's going to be coming up is the Housing Authority Board. Jim Corbett is the current chair and he is going to be relocating to Colorado. So we will have an interim position open on the Housing Authority Board. And the only other thing I have is Thursday at one PM. I would hope all of you could make it to the Maven, um. Grand opening and ribbon cutting. Uh, this is our building. It's a city building and it would be great, uh, if we could have a great show up there at one o'clock.
Any questions? Nope. Okay, Shari?
Um, Lift Committee is going to meet tomorrow, uh, go over our questions and our scoring system. Um, we did receive nine applications for our funding through March thirty-first. Are a total of three point four million dollars in asks. We have a hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars that we can. Put towards those projects. So if you, if we're gonna make changes to what you're all. Wanting, we may want to get that on the next work session to make those changes before we. Start scoring these applicants, or if you're going to put maximum amounts on it. Um, I want to stand corrected on the Goshen County. Originally, when they started their tax, they granted loans, but it ended up with too many bad experiences of people defaulting on the loans. So they eliminated that loan program and just went with a, a cap amount for the monies that they gave to people. So, um, they, they don't offer the loans anymore. They just said it was too much work and then they took a beating because. People defaulted on those loans and that was a worse hit for them, just to take that bad publicity for, um. Loans that defaulted. Um, the other thing, uh, we do have a board, two board positions, um, that will be vacant July first. Um, we, we have advertised for that. I believe we've only received one. Person, um, so far. To put in for that. So if you do know people, please, we're a fun group. Um, the, uh, council member, why, Missy White had asked me about the low income. How many people we added to, um, low income changing, um, the, how we were scoring people. We've added seven, only seven. So we had to pass the, a way that was in our original nineteen. So our success for that. I think is still small for the three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven customers we have. Um, we're going to try different avenues and we're going to try going to the senior center. Um, speaking to the groups at the senior center, I think we're missing a group of people that aren't on social media. Probably don't have an email. So we're going to try a different avenue just to see if we can get some more, uh, interest in that program. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say was, uh, I think you all know I sit on the National, uh, Public Treasurers, um. Association. Um, I, I'm going to Portland this weekend. They pay for me to go. I was going to be working a booth. And then I put in for GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association. It's a huge convention, two thousand people. Um, and it's all public treasures. Well, I put in for a scholarship for the tuition, so I got a scholarship for five hundred and seventy-five dollars for my, uh. Tuition. So I get a free trip that the city doesn't have to pay for, and I get to continue in education hours. So I won't be here next week for that reason. And that is all I have.
Mayor?
Councilman White?
So Shari, um, maybe having little postcards that could go into the Good Samaritan meals would be a nice way to help advertise that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I've shared them with Ann. She's writing them down. She's going to start working on. I don't know if people read their, you know, we put it in the news. Or in the water bill. I'm not, I don't know. We're going to try putting in there a couple of times. I'm not sure how many people read their water bill. I mean, hate to suggest it to people when they come in, you know, you don't want to stereotype of somebody thinks you. You know, you're trying to tell them that they can't afford their water. Um, I don't know. I just think we're missing a, I, we're missing a pocket of people that aren't hearing about it that would qualify for it that. Um. I just, because we've expanded it so much that. I would hope that more people would come. So if any of you get a chance to talk about it, please do.
The other thing could be, um, something facing out on that window because a lot of folks do come to pay in person. So something about. Uh, if you meet these guidelines, you may be eligible for, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Just a simple eight and a half by eleven sign right there by the. By the window could also help.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Yes, Councilman Martin? One more question there, Shari. Uh. Do you know how much, uh? The, uh. The extra water that we've had flowing this winter. Uh. Was, uh. Was utilized over what we had previous winters from just letting it, you know, doing the, the stream.
I can't tell you that tonight, but I can tell you at the next time. I just did turn, cycle over and put, um, everybody back to the regular billing. So I have not done any analysis on the water that has been sold through the winter time. But that is my next project now that I've turned it back to, to the regular, um, water usage charges.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Pretty Philip?
I have one quick thing tonight. I generally don't have things because most of the things I do are confidential, but. Tonight I do have one thing. Um, I was asked a couple of questions about tabling. And I thought it would be beneficial to give a brief training on when you guys make a motion for tabling. Um, I did a deep dive into Robert's rules. It was fascinating. It wasn't fascinating. It was horribly boring, but. Um. Primarily what it comes down to is that there was a motion to table the fee schedule that was done at the last voting session. And as I looked into that, what Robert's rules say. And, and that's under the parliamentary rules, which we abide by, that if that motion is not brought up at the next meeting. Then it dies. Can't vote on it unless you designate that you are going to bring it up at a. Meeting later on at a different date to be able to untable it and specify what date that would be. Then you can do that, but it can't be more than, it says a quarterly amount of way. I don't know what that means. I'm going to go with three months. So it has to be decided within a quarter of the next time if you don't. But if you don't designate the specific day, but you say it's going to come up in the future. You can't really do that because it will die in its own motion. And the whole reason why. Is because they don't want people to. They're, they're trying to avoid using the table as a tool to destroy argument or to chill argument on certain motions. And so they want you to be able to argue and make a decision. That's why it's on your agenda to be able to make that decision. Truly, if you have to have more discussion, more information, that's what you table it for, but it's not supposed to stick, stick out there in perpetuity. So for example, with the fee schedule, the motion was made to table it until the next work session. Um, or I'm sorry, until the next voting session and have a work. It wasn't after the work.
We're going to a work session and then.
Until the next work session, which you can't vote on. The next work session wasn't until almost a full month later because of your budget session. And so that's fine. You can do that, but if you don't put a specific timeframe on how long you want to table something, it will die at the next meeting. Does that all make sense? Any questions on that? So I just want to make sure that you don't get yourselves into trouble if you tabled something. And say, we're going to get to this in the future. It's dead at this point. And I, the only one I'm aware of that's been tabled recently was the fee schedule, and that's why. I asked Rochelle to, to check and see that. So that was tabled, but it was specified that. When it was going to be brought up again. So then it could be on the agenda. You can bring it off the table. If it's not specified and it's not on the next meeting, it dies on its own motion. So use, and it's kind of funny because the actual correct motion is to lay it on the table. I think that sounds horrible. So tabling is fine. You can say a motion to table. You don't have to say a motion to lay it on the table. Um, but, uh, just be aware that there is that. Contingency in there that if you don't ta- take action on it within the next meeting or designate when you will take action on it, then it will die on its own motion. You'll have to. Make a new motion and get it. Start all over again. Okay? Any questions on that?
If we did it right by accident.
You did it right by accident.
Okay, that's good.
Good work. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah, Mr. Mayor. Uh, not a question for you, Attorney Phillips. Thank you for that. Really helpful clarification. Um. I have a lot of discomfort with tabling in general. I think it's like, we're here discussing, let's work this out. And I think that's just being lengthy and. Uncomfortable maybe for some of, from some of us as well. So that aside, Mr. Mayor, that is a question. Are we expecting that to be on the May agenda, uh, work session?
The work.
It should be on the next work session, the, the fee schedule, and then you'll have to vote on it following voting session.
Be voted on.
So you'll have to take it off the table at the following voting session.
Yep, yep, sounds good. I just wasn't sure if we were explicit for the May work session.
Now, there is a very specific purpose to tabling. I mean, the idea is that if. If there is more information that needs to be coming to you guys, the ones who are making the decision, that's the point of tabling it to say. Yeah, we need more information before we can actually vote on this. That's really the purpose. Some people, I've read a lot of case law on it and a lot of explanations. People are, they find loopholes and they use it as a weapon to say, well, we're going to table this indefinitely and hope that nobody brings it off the table. So it'll die and then we don't have to worry about it, but. Um. Certainly it's never happened here intentionally like that. It's just. The tabling is a good tool to be able to use to get more information. Just need to make sure we're doing it timely. So there you go. And I have to excuse myself to go to a school concert.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Rochelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Uh, the city is in the process of hiring temporary summer and street positions. There, there will be a couple of ordinances and resolutions that will come before the council. In the next couple of months, one will be on the elected official salaries. The legislature, the, the state passed a. A statute indicating that if you wanted to as elected officials, you could waive your salary. Previously, some people like during COVID wanted to do that, but legally that was. That was not possible and it is now. So we just need to update. Our codes to, to reflect the change in the law. There will also be an update on our procurement policies, again. Driven by statutory change as well as, um. An explanation or definition, uh, will be proposed to the bar and grow licensing because the sixty, forty split now can, um. Can be entertainment, not just food. And so the definition of entertainment though was left up to local authority. So each municipality needs to define what entertainment means in their location. The only guidelines really, uh, that the state provided was. That entertainment cannot be, um, adult entertainment or gambling. So other than that, there needs to be a discussion about what Lander wants entertainment to look like. And then the last thing. Uh, starting in July, you will have one full year to obtain public officer training that will be required. As elected officials and some of our boards will need to do that as well. Uh, going to WHAM is one way to do that. I've been told that for, for your purposes as council members. WHAM intends to create an online training program as well to fulfill those requirements. Thank you.
Questions? Alright. Moving on. Thank you. Uh. I'm right on our item. This consent agenda. Uh, approval of April eleventh, twenty-three regular council minute meetings. B, April twenty-fifth, twenty-three regular council minute meetings. And C, April twenty-fifth, twenty-three work session, minute meetings.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. That was my Councilman Cox, that was my Councilman Martin. Call for question, Councilman Hahn?
Mayor?
Oh, yes, go ahead just a minute.
Thank you. Just a quick, uh, discussion item. I think I saw an edit, I'm sorry, typo on the work session minutes. Of, um, the second line, three point oh seven million in the reserves should be three point seven, I believe. Is that, oh, excuse me, okay. Uh, I apologize then.
Okay. Call for the question, Councilman Hahn?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving on. New business action items. What you're hosting right. Uh. Read the proposal for the City Lender Budget for F I Y twenty, twenty-three and twenty-two, four into the records. Shari?
Um, per our budget meeting that we had, I did, the only change I made to the budget was moving. The a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars from that replacement equipment line item and adding it to. Um, the pay, the payroll burden to the police department for, um. Chief Phillips to add that additional position. Otherwise, that was the only change that was made to it. Um, in the. Uh, Rochelle included the entire budget, um, in there for, if you wanted to look at, at it. Um, we, this is just reading in what we, the numbers that we had talked about. Um, it will go in for final approval and have the public hearing. Then, um, in the meeting that we'll have in June ninth, thirteenth. So, uh, general fund, seven million, eighty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and five dollars. Enterprise fund, fifteen million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Optional tax, four million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand and ninety-five dollars. Economic development tax, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Airport fund, one million, seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Capital projects, one million, four hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Senior Center, twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars.
You have a total on that, man?
A total?
Yeah.
I don't have that totaled. I don't have that total. I don't think my.
Yeah.
My budget totals the whole thing.
I think I'd estimate it around thirty-five or something.
Yeah, my budget does not, because, because I do fund accounting and each of those are a fund. I do not have a total of the whole thing. I can add it up and give it to you.
Sometime would be great.
Okay.
Sir Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so Shari, given my misunderstanding there about the amount of reserves, since we're requesting for fiscal year twenty-four or requesting that we're looking at a budget of seven point oh eight. We don't have six months in our reserves then. If we only have three million in our reserves, we're a little bit shy there. Is that?
Well, because this year is seven million, but the only reason this year is seven million is because five hundred and ten thousand. Is additional, and you know, is from the supplemental one-time funds. So our normal budget historically has been five, five point five. This is a little bit more because, uh, the, yeah. Okay. But I mean, I, I do think it's a good idea that to cap, have a resolution that does say what the council's desire is of how much you like to keep in your reserves. We discuss that. We talk about it. Um, you know, if, if at the end of the year we had money left over and we, and you wanted to be at three point five million dollars and we could allocate. That, you know, enough to make three point five million sitting in the, um. Reserve fund and then allocate the rest of it to go to the equipment replacement line item. But I do think it's a good idea because we don't, we've never said anything formally of what our. Desire or wish was for where we wanted to always be with our reserve funds.
We didn't set that our, four years ago at our city plan meetings that. The council directed just to put two point five in there.
I don't remember that we did. I'm looking at you. I don't remember that we did a resolution on it.
Yeah, but I think the kind of head shake around the table is maybe not sufficient enough for clarity and.
Yeah.
Yeah, just having an established direction where we want to be. So I like the idea quite a bit of having established policy saying this amount, you know, maybe it's. Uh, you know, proportion and then that way if we're under or over, we can, uh, hold ourselves accountable to what we said we wanted to do.
Yeah, my, my recollection is it was a goal to do that, but we never stated formally because without it being a resolution, then another council could come and say, you know, spend it all. Do you have?
Councilman Hahn?
Yeah, sure. I, i- is there a standard out there?
You know, that, everybody has a different amount. There's municipalities to, don't have anything saved. There's municipalities that keep one month saved. There's some that keep nine months saved. I think six months is probably. A good case scenario if the state act happened to not be able to make payments for a couple of months that we could still float ourselves without having to worry of that we. Our sales tax and our other taxes hadn't come in, that we would have a reserve enough. To go on there. Sometimes actually having a real hearty reserve hurts you. Because like when we applied for some SLIB loans, uh, they're like, well, you have too much money in the bank. You know, and we're like, well, we don't want to be poor. We want to be able to have money to, to meet our needs or our obligations and be able to replace equipment. But. In that instance, they were, they wanted us more to be. And it was, uh, USDA. Um, said you, yeah, you have too much money that we, we can't help you. So I don't know. It's win-loss. I, I think I'd rather have a reserve and be told no, and then. At least we have money in the bank. I mean, when I started here, I mean, we had six hundred thousand dollars. So we've come a long way in getting, um. That reserve built up, so. that reserve built up, so. Hat on the back.
I just have. Thank you, Mayor. I just did the math. Thirty-one million, forty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight for the total. So that gives us, what, ten percent in reserves? Approximately, I mean.
Well, what, actually, what we normally do the reserves on is just the general fund. So the general fund this, this year had seven million in it, but it's only seven million. That's the highest it's been since I've been here, and it's because we have some additional supplemental monies that's, it's not our norm. I would say we take a three-year average of what our general fund total budget was, and that'd be our goal always to keep, um, you know, half, six months worth of that in our reserve account.
Okay, thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the reading? Of the city budget? A second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, and by Councilman White. Propose the city budget as read. Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving on. Authorize the mayor to sign a request for FAA approval agreement for trade entitlements waiving recipient of a hundred and fifty thousand from fiscal year twenty twenty to and twenty twenty-three for the Hunt Field Airport. So those sums can be made available for the Fort Bridger Airport. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I was approached by FAA a couple of weeks ago. They asked me if we can help this airport out, be the Fort Bridger in the hundred and fifty thousand entitlement funds that we get every year. Um, so I don't think we should have any issue with that, helping them out. We will get the funds back either next year or the year after that from that airport. So it's just helping another airport out when you know, we'll get the same from another airport if we ever need help again.
Questions? Can I get a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the request for the FAA approval of agreement for trade entitlements waiving receipt of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fiscal years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three for the Hunt Field Airport so that those sums can be made available to the Fort Bridger Airport. Second?
Motion by Councilman Cox, and by Councilman White. Any questions, concerns? Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on. Authorize the mayor to sign a John Deere customer purchase agreement commitment to the lease of a John Deere construction, utility, and forest product compact construction equipment, USPA pound zero nine zero five two two five four for the purchase of a John Deere six twenty-four PT tier well loader twenty twenty-three WAUSAU eighteen fifty BMP Blue Max Airport plow and a twenty-three Craig five-yard light material bucket in the total amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight and five cents for the Hunt Field Airport previous approved approval. Uh, Chris?
So this is a new purchase agreement that John Deere is doing. This is the first time that we've ever had to do it. I don't think we had to do it in the last loader. This should be the last, um, form that we need to sign before we actually order the loader and plow and bucket.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
A motion and a second?
Yeah.
Got a motion by second by Councilman Larson, authorize the mayor sign the John Deere agreement or disagreement. Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on to item D. Authorizes mayor to send memorandum of understanding between Fremont County Pioneer Museum and the city of Lander. Who wants to take this one? Ann?
There should be a copy of the MOU in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions or do you want me to go through it?
Any questions? Don't think so.
You said all to do with that electronic sign, didn't it?
Right.
Yeah, so the new sign is on order that'll go there, and then that sign that's at the museum property will go up to the community center. So we're just waiting for it to arrive and get scheduled. But I'll keep you posted.
Perfect.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
And motion by Councilwoman Cox. Uh, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item E, award the bids of American Road Maintenance in the total amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six for the Lander Hunt Field Airport in Lander pavement maintenance project. Chris?
So this one is the actual seal coat and marking for the airport. Um, the total cost on this project is a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. The state is covering a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. So the city cost is eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. So this will reseal and coat all payment up at the airport to, and remarket.
Any questions?
There isn't. I, yes, Mayor, I do. I just, I was a little bit confused, and maybe I just misunderstood this because within this agreement, there's the engineer's estimate and then the straight stripe painting as well. That's not included in the or is that included in this? Hundred and seventeen? You see what I'm saying? So it's
Yeah, so the one that we awarded, or that we're trying to award is the American Road Maintenance. They were the lower bidder.
Oh, I, I get it.
With Adura, the engineer, they do a great job with this.
Yeah, that's, that was a real brain fart on my part. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
As I read that completely wrong.
Okay. Other questions? Can I get a motion? Right, Nina? Award the bid?
Mayor, I'm, uh, move that we authorize to award the bid to American Road Maintenance for the Hunt Field Airport pavement maintenance project in the amount of a one hundred and seventeen dollars and seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay. A second?
A second, Dan.
A motion by Councilman, two was second by Jay Hahn. Councilman Jay Hahn, I'm trying to get that right, so we have to write the Hahn down there. To prove this, we're going to call for the questions. There's no more questions. Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item F. Approval of Wind River Visitors Council proposal budget and operation plans for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, we have Helen and one coming up. So state your names and so we don't all know you. Now you can say it.
Helen Wilson, Wind River Visitors Council.
Owen Sweeney, Lander appointee to the Visitors Council, also currently serving as Board Vice President.
Thank you for having us here. Um, so we gave you a very large packet this year. I think it was fourteen pages long. We wanted to get all the information out there. Um, and I'm just going to go through some highlights, and then I am happy to answer any questions. Um, we switched the way that we did our budget last year. And it's worked out really well, um, this current fiscal year. Um, Owen is also the chamber director. And he's known exactly how much money he's getting for TAD money, which has made budgeting really easy. Um, but it also means that we're using, we don't project anymore. We use the previous full fiscal year's revenue as our budget, which is, um, I think a safe way to do things, and it is working out well. So we're looking at our record-breaking tourism year for this coming up year. So we're going from seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred in our budget to one million, sixteen thousand, six hundred and ten. Um, some of the big changes, um, we had our first audit this year, and it was expensive getting an audit, but we did really well with it. So it was really exciting to we were told that it was unheard of how clean our audit was. So, um, we've got extra money toward an audit. Um, we're also putting extra money toward conference attendance. Um, we've found that it's really good for us to be all over the state to be representing Wind River country at these conferences. So we're looking at doing some international conferences as well as the American Indian Conference and a few others. So we've raised that. Um, Lander, um, brought in thirty point two percent of the um, lodging tax revenue and therefore is going from fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight this current fiscal year to seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, um, in TAD, um, TAD money. Um, we've also increased our fam tours and our press trips. So these are people who come through town and cover us and get the word out through, um, through magazines and through newspapers and and the fam tours is often, we just hosted, um, the Wyoming Office of Tourism had twelve people from their welcome centers throughout the state. And we just hosted them, showed them around, and they had a really great time, and that was just last week. Um, we've also increased our conference meeting marketing, um, because we will be going to more conferences. And our international marketing, um, has increased as well because, um, COVID is not so much a thing anymore, and people are starting to travel more internationally. Um, one thing we do have that we received this year is destination development program funding from the Wyoming Office of Tourism, and this is a new program through the Wyoming Office of Tourism that the lodging tax boards through the state can apply for. So we qualified for three hundred thousand dollars and, um, and we have until the end of June twenty twenty-four to spend this. So the projects that are specific to Lander, um, we're working on wayfinding and informational signage in Lander, and we've been working very closely with Ann on that. Um, we're looking at doing signage at the bus loop. Um, this is a very complicated project that has been discussed for many, many years. And we are, um, taking a stab at it. Um, but this would put, um, trail signage for tourists, but also it would make it so that the trails that are developed are actually marked as trails. And the trails that aren't really developed, um, people will know that they are not trails, and that way they don't keep expanding. Um, we're also putting a video display in the Lander Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. So when people come in, there's video pictures, um, and all kinds of, kinds of promotion for our area. Um, you do have a full breakdown in the packet that we gave you, just kind of breaking down every single line item. Uh, many of them have gone up because we have, um, we have more money to spend this year. So that's, that's a really positive thing. Um, the lodging tax vote, and I find this really interesting. So the lodging tax goes up for renewal every four years. And it was just up in November, and the countywide number was seventy-two percent approval. But I looked up the individual, um, towns and cities, and Lander passed with eighty-one percent. So that was really exciting to see that, um, the community in Lander is supportive. And I think that has a lot to do with the chambers' efforts and with the community really knowing what the money is for. I think if people are seeing where the lodging tax money is being spent, then they'll be more supportive of it than if they don't actually see that. Um, jobs and wages, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five jobs in Fremont County that were related to tourism. And some travel trends for twenty twenty-three. Consumers are booking vacations earlier. There is an increase in international travel. Travel costs are on the rise. There is an increase in off-season travel. There is an increase in off-grid travel and connecting with nature. Um, I find that this chart that you all received is pretty handy as far as seeing where the lodging tax has gone. Um, this chart shows you from two thousand and fifteen all the way up to this current fiscal year. And as you'll see, in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, our revenue jumped from just over seven hundred thousand to a million sixteen thousand, six hundred and ten, which, as I mentioned, is the, is the budget for next year. What we're looking at for this year, we're all, and I, I realize we just got a new number, so it's actually higher than this, but we're already in the eight hundred thousands for this fiscal year, and we still have three more months. And my guess, looking at numbers and looking at travel trends, is that we're not going to be quite as high as last year. We're not going to hit the one million, sixteen thousand, but I would put us pretty close to a million, just probably slightly below it. Some highlights from this year. Um, I was actually the speaker at the Lander Chamber of Commerce Community Awards Luncheon, which, um, we got some really great feedback from the community on that. Um, once again, it's about educating people about what the Wind River Visitors Council does. And, um, and we've had not only comments from people who were there, but people who heard that we were there and heard what we said, saying, we didn't know you guys did that. So it was, it was a really positive thing for the Wind River Visitors Council. Um, we are helping, um, Central Wyoming College with a tourism study of Fremont and Hot Springs counties. My hope for this is that, um, that we can use the results to apply for future grants. Um, and that's, they've been in the process of doing this, um, and hopefully we'll have results in a couple of months. But if things are identified where, um, that we could really benefit from tourism, then we can actually apply for grants and use that study um, to do that. Um, I did mention the Destination Development Program. Um, the Wyoming Office of Tourism, I think, is kind of trying this out. Um, the, the money was we have eighteen months, as I mentioned, to spend it, but they are looking at possibly continuing it. So, um, we had a very short time to apply for it. But it is something that if it's continued, um, you know, we've got, we can start thinking about what, what our next list of projects would be. So um, we definitely want to get, um, the city's input on that. We've also had a, oh, gonna stop there for getting ahead of myself. Um, we also had a winter press trip. The Winter Visitors Council is definitely promoting the summer, and it's always been a big, a big droll. But this past winter, we decided to really focus on winter activities as well, and we had a record-breaking winter. Um, we, we hosted a press trip, and we had them stay in the yurts in Sinks Canyon, which was really fun for them, and go, um, snow shoeing in Sinks Canyon as well. And Jessica, at the superintendent there, has done a really great job of, of showing around the people that we are sending her way. Um, we did some other winter activities as well, but, um, but Sinks Canyon has been featured a lot this winter. We've also been helping people apply for the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant, which is an ARPA grant. Um, and, um, written a lot of letters of support and helped to point people in the direction of that. They are releasing a second grant. Um, the first one was the end of last year. And a second grant period will be opening up, um, in the next few days, hopefully, and there'll be twelve million dollars available for additional, um, grants in, um, in the area. Um, for media car, coverage, um, we applied with this for the Sunset Travel Awards. And we actually won for twenty twenty-two the most, um, remarkable outdoor recreation region. So that was really exciting for our community. Um, Lander got number ten for eleven amazing yurt getaways across the country. Um, it, Sinks Canyon State Park was featured in twelve of the best day trips in the Rocky Mountains. There was an, an article, um, called Explore the Lesser Known Side of Wyoming on this three-day getaway um, and Lander and Sinks Canyon, along with the Wind River Wild Horse Sanctuary and the National Bighorn Sheep Center and Atlantic City were featured in that one. And then, um, ten winter hikes to keep you trailblazing all year round. Um, Sinks Canyon was, um, featured in that one, and that was actually in Men's Journal. Um, and these are all of the, the press releases and things and the communications. I get, I get very into the media. That's, that's my background. So we, we, we do a lot of that. And, um, and then we also got featured, um, seven wild museums in Wyoming. The Museum of the American West was featured. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is it is National Travel and and, um, the, and what the Wyoming Office of Tourism just released the numbers for twenty twenty-two as a way of starting off the National Travel and Tourism Week. But that means that we haven't yet put together the annual report. But I'll be dropping a stack of those off in the next couple of weeks. It's almost as I'm, we've been waiting for the numbers and have just started plugging them in, but, um, that'll, that'll be available in the next couple of weeks. So you'll have, everybody will have that. Um, and I'm gonna hand it over to Owen and then take any questions.
I have nothing to say other than, um, Visitors Council's been delighted we hired Helen a few years ago, and she has just done an absolutely fantastic job. Um, for those who don't know, tourism is the second largest economic generating industry in the state. And a few years ago during the COVID years, um, And a few years ago, during the COVID years, every county in Wyoming lost tourism revenue. But Fremont County lost the fourth least amount of money, which shows a lot of, which, which is really evidence of the great job that Helen did and really the wonderful people who I work with on the board. So just wanted to give Helen those kudos. She's done a fantastic job, and we both stand for questions.
Any questions, Councilwoman White?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much a question, but a point I'd love to add to you for consideration. With the increased number of tourism, especially into more remote locations, one of the groups that is, to some extent, already feeling it and anticipates feeling it a lot more is our local search and rescue. So I, I'm curious if you can, at some point, think of potential funding opportunities for that. Most of their fund, they get, you know, some from the county, but they have to do a lot of fundraising as well. People aren't charged for rescues. But we anticipate that there will be some increased demand for the local search and rescue. And getting some additional funding streams would be really nice. I've mentioned it to Dave Glenn, who's the interim director of state parks that's overseeing the outdoor rec collaboratives as well. But it seems like Office of Tourism, again, with some of the places that you're looking at advertising, it'd be great if you could think about either diverting some of the funding towards that or, or helping in advocating for that, I think would be really helpful.
That's wonderful, Missy. And I can, I, I'm not sure that the lodging tax money would qualify for that. However, we get, we see grants all the time. And I'm partially wondering if the ARPA Outdoor Recreation Grant might not be, work for that. But I'll do, I'll do a little bit of research, and I'll reach out to Search and Rescue as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
May.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much for the phenomenally in-depth information. I really appreciate the fourteen-page packet that you gave, which, when you say it's long for what we get for some things, it's not long. So don't worry about doing fourteen pages next time. I have a lot of questions, but I'll try to choose a few. Can you talk about what trends you're seeing with, where tourists like to stay? Are we still seeing, I believe that we were seeing trends away from hotels and into short-term rentals? Is that continuing? Is there?
It absolutely is. And I, I am actually including a graph in the annual report on that. But it's, it's, you know, you've got a bar, and this is the short-term rentals. And then the teeny tiny bit at the top is the hotels themselves. People are wanting space. They, you know, COVID, even though COVID is coming to an end, people, people have gotten used to space, and they want their space, and they want their privacy, and they want their own rules. And we really used our trademarks of room to, room to roam and room to breathe to bring people to the area. But we are seeing, we are seeing short-term rentals are being used more than hotels now.
Great. And can you, Mr. Mayor, follow up? Do you remind me, the, the formal platforms do collect lodging tax, Airbnb, VRBO, is that correct?
That's correct. The, and those collect them automatically if anybody signs up for those.
Okay, great. Now, if the rental is more casually rented, then we're not seeing that lodging tax collected.
We don't have the means to monitor that, but they are supposed to do that.
Got it. Regine is turning her microphone on, I think.
If I may.
Yeah.
When an Airbnb comes through as a conditional use permit, that is one of the stipulations we put on as a condition, that they have to show proof of a Wyoming sales tax license. However, we don't monitor annually how much lodging tax they collect. But we do make sure they have everything in place so that they can collect those taxes.
Thank you. That's helpful to have.
Any rental under thirty days is supposed to collect it.
Great. Yeah, I don't think I have, you know, a conclusion or another question, or a bit, something for the council, I think, to continue to think about. One is we're looking at our affordable housing quandaries and how we create more affordable housing in town, but also balance that with the needs of some property owners to collect revenue by hosting, you know, Airbnbs. And then also the importance of that to our tourism economy, too, that we have that provided. So it's, there's some tensions out there that I think will continue to come before us potentially.
And I, and I'm also gonna just mention another tension that we hear about is, is that there's a lot of people coming to the area, and there's a lot of people hiking now. So we've been trying to really promote the Leave No Trace Principles and about, you know, pick, take your trash with you, and then educating people who aren't familiar with outdoor regions about, about how to properly use that, the outdoor resources that we have. So we're also trying to protect while promoting.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Another one?
Just a comment on that, because I, when you talk about the signs of the bus, I, I'm sort of two minds. I'm like, oh, that's excellent, it's an amazing resource, the signage would help. And the parking and the lack of amenities seems like a constraining factor, one that we all need to pay attention to as well. I know that's part of the county's issue. There's a lot of land ownership questions, not questions, but things to navigate out there. But I just think as we, as we're promoting some of these sites and doing some development at them, you know, making sure we're looking at the, the full picture of that asset, because that parking is gonna be a problem with a lot more people out there.
And we might, and after a couple of initial meetings, we were thinking we might need to put that money toward parking solutions or signage in the parking lot. And, but we're, we're working through the process.
Thanks for thinking about it. Thank you.
Around, anybody else? I need a motion to approve the Wind River Visitors Council proposed budget and operation plan for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And most my councilwoman Cox, second by councilwoman Stubble, to approve the Wind River Visitors Council proposed budget and operation plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. Any questions, concerns? Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item G, authorize mayor to sign an amendment to twenty-three Transportation Alternative Program, tap project, C, D, two, three, five, one, four, Regine.
I, I'll talk about G and H together, if I may. These are the agreements for the awards from the tap grants that we got earlier. The one listed as five, one, four is for studying the first and main pedestrian traffic issue and also getting a connected pathway all the way up to the park, the new park. And then the one listed as five, one, three, and item H is the Baldwin Creek South Night Complete Street Safe Rest to School. If you have any other questions on those, I'd be happy to answer that.
Questions? There is none. Can I get on item G, authorize mayor to sign agreement amendment twenty twenty-three for Transportation Alternative Program, tap project, C, D, two, three, five, one, four? Any motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second again. Am I seconding too much?
No, you're fine. I got a motion by Councilwoman White, second by Councilwoman Stubble, authorizes mayor to sign an amendment agreement for the tap grant project. Over to question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to H, authorize mayor to sign agreement amendment twenty twenty-three Transportation Alternative Program, cap ramp, C, D, two, three, five, one, three. And Regine just talked about that. Do you have any questions on that one? Since there isn't, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. That emotion by Councilwoman Cox, and by Councilman Larson, authorize mayor to sign the amendment agreement, Transportation Alternative Program, C, D, two, three, five, one, three. Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving on to I, authorize mayor to sign an addendum to extension of the golf course lease agreement. Shari?
I spoke about this at the, at our budget meeting. And when we'll be doing a budget amendment, we'll show this, pay in the beginning in May. Historically, we've always paid them in July afterwards. This year, we're actually asking for something in return for the, our money that we give to them. It will include all city employees, which also means all of you. Anyone that receives a W-two wage will get that benefit. After talking with Chief Peters, he said that if you're interested in doing it, you will go up there. They'll have you fill out a member form, or just so they have a list of names and addresses of people that will be utilizing it. We're not expecting all city employees to do this, but it's a nice perk for those that do golf.
Questions?
Mayor, I do have.
Stu.
Thank you. Um, so Shari and I, I guess, maybe Attorney Phillips, if he was here. So in the Terms of Conditions, Section Two, I have a comment and then a question, I guess. So the comment is, that first sentence, the way it's worded, and I'll read it out loud. "The execution of this agreement shall allow each City of Lander employee to receive a single season pass for the lump sum payment forty-three thousand five hundred dollars made by the City of Lander." My understanding is that that lump sum payment is, is not, it's not a quid pro quo just for those season passes, right? It's that we're taking all the, the payments we used to make, or the money we used to allocate to the golf course, and we're putting it in this lump sum, and we're asking separately for these passes. But that sentence makes it sound to me like we're saying, "Give us a bunch of passes, we'll pay forty-three thousand dollars for them." And so I don't know if there's anybody else uncomfortable with that, but I wonder if we can rephrase it so it doesn't get misconstrued as though we're paying for that many season passes for forty-three thousand dollars.
Rachel.
So I'm not extremely familiar with the wording in the past and what, what's happened, but it could be phrased to say, you know, the city is, is, is providing funding in this amount as we traditionally do. And in addition to whatever else the city normally receives as, in return, the golf course agrees to provide each city employee a, a single membership. Is that?
Something to that effect would, I would be more comfortable with. I'm looking to see if there's any other head nods there.
And that, the, I, I see what you mean by that, that the current wording kind of makes it sound like a quid pro quo agreement, and that's not what is intended.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I did want to, want to make sure it wasn't just me. Mr. Mayor, if I can move on to my other question?
What?
Thank you. So I wonder if we can approve this with an amendment that it's this, these season passes will be allowed for the City of Lander employee or their designee of choice, which could entail perhaps donating them, excuse me. I just wonder if, if we have it by employee name, there might be employees who don't use this benefit, but they might have a spouse, a child, somebody they would designate who would benefit, you know, in a greater amount than an employee who might not go golfing.
That was not an option from the golf course. That was just for the city employee, and it was non-transferable.
Great. That's what they want, is that, do we want?
The other thing that's gonna come to play with this also is, Rochelle has looked into it. I was trying to make it so it was a non-taxable benefit to the employee if we incorporated some kind of a wellness plan around it. It, we're still looking into that, but it may end up being a taxable, taxable event for each employee also.
In that case, could those employees waive that benefit?
Yeah, if they, if they don't, if they, if they're not interested and they go, don't go up there and they don't fill out, yeah, you wouldn't be assessed that. I would ask that you, if you wanted to make an amendment to how it's written, if you could make that amendment, because if we hold off another month and that, that's another month that the employee would be losing out of being able to use their membership. And I, we have several employees who are very anxiously awaiting for the approval of it.
Yeah, good to hear. No, I think we should decide it tonight. I just, I hear the golf course doesn't want it to be a designee. I wonder if that's something that we want to push. I don't want to be the only one, if I'm the only one who's interested, then.
If you have, anything to add to that, excuse me?
Well, the only worry with the designees, it's hard to track. So what you end up with is, well, you know what, I'm gonna give mine to Sam, I'm gonna give mine to Bob. And in turn, from a golf course standpoint, then all of a sudden they get stuck in a spot of trying to track this and track this, where the employee is simple. Where either they have a, they have a list, you come in, they know it's you, they check you off, they add you. But when it comes to, how do they verify if somebody goes up there and I say, you know what? I don't want mine, but I'm giving mine to Bill over here. Well, how do we know who Bill is? How do we know that that actually is true? So I think there'd be an absolute kind of nightmare that we'd put on the golf course of trying to figure out who all these designees possibly could be.
Okay.
I would agree with Chief on that. I think it'd be a, a wreck.
Hey, did you have a question?
No. Question, just a, I mean, I really like this, just the trends and just really trying to support staff wellness as well as like benefits. This is a way to think outside of the box and, and it really benefits the golf course and the long, I mean, I'm gonna dust off my clubs, you know, I mean, I think, I'm gonna guess that you've had something to do with this, because I think you're a golfer, too, right? So I, I mean, I just think it's great. I, I would, you know, I understand where you're coming from, too, and I think that the wording does need to be. But what a great way to think outside the box, good job. I mean, this is cool, so.
Change the wording.
So it's, it's my understanding that traditionally the city has provided thirty-nine thousand dollars for golf course operations. Thirty-six thousand? Okay. Thirty-seven. Someone told me thirty-nine earlier today. So, okay, thirty-seven. So the wording could, in that paragraph, could perhaps say something along the lines of, you know, the City of Lander agrees to, to pay the golf course forty-three thousand dollars, which represents sums normally provided by the city for golf course operations. And in return, the golf course agrees to, to do whatever it is they normally do, which is golf course operations and provide the passes to each individual city employee. Does that sound? And I'm just trying to hammer out some of the language so that we can accomplish the goal of, of moving forward. Is, is that, I'm seeing perplexed.
That sounds better to me, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds better.
So I would move to amend the MOU as the city clerk.
It's an, it's an addendum, non-MOU, just trying to get the.
Addendum. Move to amend the addendum as Rochelle has noted.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, the most my councilwoman White, and second by Councilman Larson, to change it, addendum to the extension of the golf course lease as presented. I'm sorry, I can't remember all that you said, but I opened it down.
I did write it down.
Okay. So, any more questions? Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, moving on to item J.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Okay, all right.
That motion was to move to a den, to amend, but we didn't authorize in that motion language. Do we need to now move to authorize?
Yes.
That's correct. That was going to be my question. So now we need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the addendum as amended.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize you to sign the addendum to the extension of the golf course lease agreement as amended.
Okay. Second?
Second.
And most my councilwoman Stu.
Your mic went off there, Mayor.
Mayor, I think your microphone went off. I hope you hit the button.
So, move. Okay, call for the question. Any more questions? Got a motion and a second already. Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. Game of, on. Off, moving on to item. You know, authorize mayor to send one's award, five twenty-nine, twenty-three, for the, for the High Pressure High Country Construction Inc. in the amount of nine million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents for the Lander High Pressure Water System Upgrade Phase Three, Regine.
Thank you.
Lance asked me to talk about this, and I want to remind you, it says phase three, but this is the tank projects that we're always talking about. And we went back and asked for more money at the state, and we were awarded that. HGR has looked at this, and they have suggested, recommended award to High Country Construction in the amount shown there. Just as a, a funding reminder, three point five seven, three point five five million of this will be funded by an AML grant. And the Wyoming Water Development Grant we got was a little over seven million. The city's match is one million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, and that will come out of the enterprise fund. And so our, our total cost with this bid this year is going to leave us about a million dollars of budget surplus from the amounts that have already been funded. If you have additional questions, there's. If you have additional questions, there's, uh, representatives from HGR here that can answer those.
You have any questions? It's a good thing. We've been trying to get this thing going for four years.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing. We got the funding for it.
Impressive grant work.
It is. So that AML money was that abandoned, abandoned mines money act that we got.
I was going to say it's impressive document at ninety-two pages. We're, we're, our council's got, they got room to grow there.
But quite a big project. City needs it. Citizens of Lander need it. So it'll be a good thing. Uh, can I get a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, we're all waiting. I move that we authorize you to sign the notice of awards dated five nine twenty twenty-three to High Country Construction, uh, in the amount of nine million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents for the lander high pressure water system upgrades, phase three projects.
I will second that.
Motion by Councilwoman Zubel, second by Councilwoman White. I'll call for the questions. Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, moving on. Item K, authorized the payments of bills and claims. Sorry?
Um, I just noticed this. I would ask that you, uh, remove the LGLP, uh, payment for twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. That's our insurance for next fiscal, fiscal year. So it's not budget. We've already paid it for this fiscal year, so it would be a budget amendment. So I would rather prefer to move that to July first because it's for next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Can we move to authorize the, the bills and payments, uh, with the exception of what, uh, Shari is designated.
A second.
Second.
And most of my councilmen, second by Councilwoman White. Now authorize payment of bills and claims that's presented with the LGP bill pulled out, so. Any other questions, concerns? Uh, call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. All right, moving on to item L. Authorized mayor sign twenty twenty-three wild and fire management annual operation plan. Chris?
This is a yearly operational plan with the federal government that we sign. Um, basically it's to allow us to go on to federal lands and assist county or BIA fighting their fires as well as if there's a federal fire within Wyoming or outside of Wyoming, the United States, we are allowed to send firemen there to assist other states with fires. And this will allow us federal money if we ever have a federal fire impact city of Lander.
Question? Okay. Can you give them? Motion to authorize mayor sign the twenty twenty-three wild empire management annual operation plan.
So moved.
Give a second.
Yep.
Another second. Okay, most my councilman Cox, I think Councilman Larson. Uh, then one more questions? And call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. I demand authorized mayor sign agreement between the owner, city of Lander and engineer Dow for professional service. Specifically a proposal, a, a proposal River Park pathway study not to exceed one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. Regine?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is related to that tap grant up above. Uh, so tonight you authorized signing the whiteout agreement, and this is asking for you to authorize signing the local agreement that will perform the engineering study for the proposal pathway and the first and main pedestrian crossing. Um, Adam has looked at the, uh, agreement as it stands and approved that. So we're just asking for approval. You'll approve it tonight, but we will not sign the agreement until YDOT gives us their approval that, uh, it's all gone through their review process.
Questions?
Councilman Hahn? Yes, sir. Okay, so I agree with the, uh, safety of all the people crossing First Street, but I think it's money not well spent to create a River Park pathway. I've been getting my ear bent off about the streets in town and, uh, I mean, some of this money could go towards an overlay, anything to, to show that we're spending money on the streets instead of buying properties and creating walkways for people. We're all going to be walking if we keep getting streets like we have. I'm thinking, you know, maybe we need to, um, steer in the direction of taking care of what we have instead of creating new things to pay to have taken care of.
Possibly.
Mayor? Um, thank you, Josh, for those comments. The, uh, this is a tap grant that we applied for almost a year ago. And out of our one percent money, this is a, I want to say it's around fourteen thousand dollars that we're spending because YDOT has granted us specifically for this study, um, the rest of that two hundred thousand dollars. So, um, it's not something that we could back up on now, but when we go to apply for tap grants in the future, um, we'd definitely keep in mind that we need to fix our own. Uh, this is not a construction. This is just a study.
Right, but we keep spending money on studies, studies and studies on all this stuff, but we're not spending money to show the public we're doing something for them.
Can't disagree with you, but we authorized to sign the whiteout agreement earlier in the meeting.
Okay, Councilman Hahn.
Regine, um, I, I know we, I know we take and, and we, and I'm not against this at all. But the, uh, um, I think my concern, and maybe it's not a big deal. Um, and I know we do engineering out front to the studies and all that, but, um, I, it, mine's just more of a comment. Um, there's been a lot of feedback on, on, um, the fifth, you know, the, uh, Fifth Street project. You know, we had to set that, you know, on the back burner. And I, I, I think my, my comment to, uh, everybody up here is, um, I hope, you know, we've got a lot of irons in the fire. I hope that, um, some of these little projects that are on the bottom of our wish list, you know, we've got the top and the middle and the bottom. I, I hope that we don't end up, um, taking a, you know, a meat and potatoes project like, like North and South Fifth. And all of a sudden down the road, we push it down the road and then we start picking these small ones up. You know, if it's small, I, I don't know where it's going to lay in the bunch, but, um, there's been a lot of feedback on that, and I just wanted to express that, that I hope we don't lose sight and, you know, North and South Fifth, you know, does a lot for a lot of people. And I, I, I just hope that down the road, it doesn't get swept away and, and that's my concern. As far as, as far as this project, you know, the, the, uh, the, the pathways, I, I personally love them. It is more of a, a timing issue. I, anyway, that's all I had to say. There's concern out there.
Go ahead.
Um, th- this is great comments to hear because in the, uh, study that we, we are authorizing here, there's a public engagement process. So, uh, we'll, we'll have the engineer loop around to get comments from you guys as individuals and the constituents that you're talking about. So that's, it's great to hear that, and I'll add that to the scope of work.
One more thing, Dan, is we're not kicking that can down the road on those. We keep watching for slips of the next pocket of money that comes, we're going to go after it. And when they start allowing it to be grant loan forgiveness because they did, um, change the interest rate on that. So we'll be looking at all our projects and anything that we have a loan with for SLIB, because if we can refinance it at the one percent, we're paying two and a half. One percent is still better than two and a half. We're going to go after that. I mean, we're even looking at if we just took all the rest of those, you know, we've had ten projects engineered. We only were granted awarding for one. If we took the rest of those, did it as a grant loan project that gets forgiveness, that has forgiveness, that has a lower debt and be able to get them all done.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Uh, but do you think that we will ever see that FEMA money?
I pray every day. Uh, I keep being told that by June thirtieth, so I'm sure hoping that by June thirtieth, we get that money because the state of Wyoming's already received the money from the federal government two years ago. I mean, it's homeland security here sitting on it. So if any of you have friends at um, the homeland security, that, that's where we need to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Hey, thank you. Go ahead, Regine.
I, I just want to, and this is a little bit off topic, but it's, it's probably good to hear this before you vote. The, um, Safe Streets for All that we're going to put in for covers some of those, uh, street projects. That's eighty percent federal grant, and it would be twenty percent that we could apply for these slip loans for. That, that covers the streets that were not in the safe routes to schools, like, you know, Fifth and Lincoln and some of the streets that weren't on the safer routes to school projects. So when you put the whole package together, we are trying our darndest to get the most grant um, initiative out of our funding. And so that makes our one percent projects money go so much farther.
John? Yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, you know, I, I understand the concern with the streets, but, uh, here this, this last week, uh, my wife and I spent some time down there at the, the proposal River Park and then we just kind of explored the kind of the interconnections of, of the, the trails and so forth, the clear up through, through Barney Park. And, uh, that, that would be a wonderful project, you know, that would be just, uh, just a great, great thing to, to have. And, uh, you know, is, is it priority number one? You know, probably not, but, uh, uh, man, it's, it would be a, it would be an asset for the town to have something like that.
Councilman White?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, agreed with, with the concerns. And again, I know our streets are, um, I don't even know the right, right adjective for them. They're not in good shape. Totally get that. Um, and I, I think that I would like to see this as an opportunity again to try to educate the broader public about the extraordinary difference in the prices that we're talking about. So again, that combination of the two miles of Lincoln Street and the two miles of Fifth Street, uh, for pavement curb and gutter and, uh, doing the sewer and water underneath was thirteen million dollars. So what we're talking about is, I just did the quick math there. Um, one tenth of one percent of that larger thirteen million. So, you know, I, I get that folks want to see streets redone right away. The, the reality is we don't have the, the depth of pockets for that. You know, that the surplus that we're talking about, if we could pull it out of the enterprise fund to put into our streets fund, it, it would do a fraction of just those two streets, let alone the other many, many miles we have. And I think that's one of the challenges we have as council is how do we, uh, when we do have some funds available, what's a good use of that project while we wait for bigger funds for, for bigger projects that require the deeper pockets? So, um, I'm, I'm going to quote Cade Masses of the, uh, you know, if, if we're pissing somebody off, we're probably doing something right on. But basically any decision we make is kind of the way it works, uh, of sitting up here.
Well, and I'll just say something real quick, a little off topic, but I just want you to know that none of our street projects are going away. We're still going to go after the funding, uh, Third Street project, uh, Lincoln Street Re-Project from Minn, and we got the funding for it. That should be going out to bids. Uh, Fifth Street, we're going to go after more funding as it comes available. We'll be down there. Find due to nail to get every dollar we can to get that project done. And we had them lumped together. They broke them out, so we got one out of the, out of the two, but we can still go back, back after the Fifth Street, and I think we can get the money for that. So I, like I said, I, there's, it's a, like throwing a dart at a dartboard and watching who we want, you know? But these are two main arteries that we have and we got to take care of them. So I want to let you know that Fifth Street is still on our radar to fix, and Lincoln should be coming up for budget. Just to let you know, I talked to Lance, we stay in contact quite a bit. And we got all these First Street and through Second Street projects with the shallow water lines and stuff that have to be fixed this year. So you're going to see a lot of construction moving on in the, the city this, this summer. So be prepared, it's going to happen, so. It'll happen, so. And if I'm wrong, get Lance in the kneecap. So, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to, um, um, comment on your comment. Um, there is one other option. Instead of, and I think it's what most people do in daily lives. If you have a number one project at the house and you don't have enough money, you don't go and blow this little bit of money because you can't get this. What you do is you, you you save for that and you don't spend over here and don't spend over here, you don't spend over here. You take the number one project you have is which Fifth is, and hopefully that happens. But you save the money, uh, instead of spending on little projects, and then you do that project. And the, most people that I guess that I'm around, um, that's, that's the kind of things they do. They, they prioritize, save the money for it, they do the project. They don't go off and let feel and say, well, I can buy this for this, so I'm going to blow the money. So anyway, that, that's, that's, that's the way I see things.
Thank, thank you. Um, and I, I guess my question is, uh, just hearing some of this discussion. If you don't, so say we don't follow through with this funding that was received, that funding wouldn't be available for street projects, correct? So if we, if we don't go after those funding, we don't have a way to save that money technically, because there would not be that money. Is that accurate?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. That's what I was trying to get at, is we're trying to leverage our one percent monies as much as we can. So Lincoln was our first street, uh, first priority, Fifth was our second priority. The state granted us Lincoln Street, so now Fifth Street's moving up the ladder. But these tap grants, um, you guys approved in twenty twenty as safe routes to schools projects that were going on. So, uh, everything's moving at the same time. But if we don't take advantage of the grant programs that are available, then we do have to do what Dan says. We have to like not do projects because we don't have the money in the bank and we don't have grants available for those projects.
Right. So of this study that's happening, the hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, you said, tell me again how much the city is responsible for?
Uh, nine point five one percent, so fourteen.
Fourteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, move on. Can I get a motion to authorize mayor to sign the agreement between the owner, city of Lander and engineer Dell Professional Service for the proposal River Park pathway studies not to exceed the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Mayor, so moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Most of my councilwoman's double, second by Councilwoman Cox, uh, I'm going to call for the question, Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, old business. Uh, first on there is A is the third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two ordinance redistricting election wards in accordance with WS S twenty-two dash twenty-three dash one oh three and Lander City Code twelve dash one dash two repealing ordinance four forty-two enacted in nineteen sixty-three.
Okay, the third and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two and ordinance redistricting election wards in accordance with Wyoming State Statute. Section twenty-two dash twenty-three dash one oh three and Lander City Code twelve dash one dash two and repealing ordinance four forty-two, which was enacted in nineteen sixty-three. Now therefore be it ordained by the governing body of the city of Lander, Fremont County, Wyoming, and hereby adopts the redistricting of election wards as set forth below and repeals ordinance four forty-two. Section one, redistricting of wards for the city of Lander are adopted in full in accordance with Wyoming State Statute. Section twenty-two dash twenty-three dash one oh three and Lander City Code twelve dash one dash two, which states that the city shall be divided into three wards and two council members shall be elected from each ward. Council members shall be qualified electors of the ward they represent. Ward boundaries will be adjusted after each census and approved by the city council. Section two, wards or boundaries which are visually described and depicted on exhibit A attached here too, and by this reference incorporated herein. Section three, the council members shall be elected from each ward aforesaid in the manner and for the term provided by law. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed, including but not limited to ordinance four forty-two enacted September third, nineteen sixty-three. Section five, separability. If any section, subsection, sentence, phase, or clause of this ordinance or application thereof to any person or circumstances is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application. And to this end,
And to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage, approval and publication as required by law and the ordinances of the city of Lander, period. The last parts are passed on the first reading, passed on the second reading, passed on the third reading, which would be tonight. Um, passed and adopted and approved by the mayor and city council signature anticipated by Mayor Richardson, attested by the city clerk, and with the certificate to follow. Uh, exhibit A is a map, um, which one can find currently on the Fremont County uh, map server website. In essence, it is the exact same boundaries that we have now, just updating those descriptions to fit our ordinance. Because it wasn't updated since nineteen sixty three. Any questions or comments on that?
Move to pass this third reading.
Okay.
Second.
Most my councilman Larson, same by councilwoman White. Uh, the third reading on ordinance twenty three dash two, redistricting of election wards. Call for a question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, another one. Third reading ordinance twenty twenty three dash one and ordinance fixing and determining the mill levy is necessary to be levied to raise significantly sufficient monies to general tax meeting current expenses of the city of Lander for the fiscal year commencing July twenty first twenty twenty three. Sure. That one yours? Or is it Rachel? Rochelle?
I, I, I could read it. I have it from the packet. Ordinance twenty twenty three dash one and ordinance fixing and determining the mill levy necessary to be levied to raise sufficient money by the general tax to meet the current expenses of the city of Lander for fiscal year commencing July first twenty twenty three. Section one, a mill levy of eight mills, no more, no less, is hereby fixed, determined, and declared necessary to raise sufficient money by general tax upon the property within the city of Lander Fremont County, Wyoming, to meet the current expenses of said city of Lander for the fiscal year commencing July first twenty twenty three. This ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage, approval and publication is required by law and the ordinance of the city of Lander passed on the first reading, March fourteenth twenty twenty three, passed on the second reading, April eleventh twenty twenty three. Anticipated, passed on the third reading, May ninth twenty twenty three, passed, adopted, and proved by the mayor and city council um, with the signatures and the certificate fixed.
Any questions? I do that. A motion?
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty three dash one.
A second.
Second.
Most my councilwoman White, same by councilwoman Cox. Doctor, I signature, read ordinance twenty twenty three dash one. Determining the middle levy is necessary. Call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. We already did executive session. A little moved to adjourn this meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll, I'll move to adjourn. Second.
The second, most my councilwoman White, same by councilwoman Cox, the adjourn the meeting, call for the question, Councilman Hahn.
Yes.
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 Yes. We use the journey.